Okay, at this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, April 18th, 2017 meeting of the Iowa County Board of Commissioners. If you'll please bow your heads and join me in a moment of silent prayer. If you'll please stand and join us in the Pledge of Legits.
The Pledge of Legits, my right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments from the staff.
There are no special recognitions or awards this evening. Likewise, there are no appointments before the board that have been scheduled. Item seven, public hearing. Mr. Russ Rogerson is here representing our economic development communities, and he will, we will be conducting a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Sparrow. Mr. Rogerson, if you will share what you have for the, for us in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I believe this is my first public hearing since returning in October, and I dare say I hope I'm not a stranger moving forward. Tonight, we're here to talk about a project that we are calling Project Sparrow. That is an existing industry that has, already has 90 million in tax value in their community with 87 jobs. They've been considering an expansion opportunity at their facility for, for some months now, and as you know, all expansions are competitive, and this one is, is no different. The company would construct if moved forward, about 117,000 square foot facility, at an estimated cost around 16 million. They would need to upgrade existing building as well for a cost of 2 million, and the new equipment would cost an estimated 46 million. They would then add 27 jobs, new jobs, paying the average wage of 37,519. The investment in this project would generate an estimated 1.1 million in new tax dollars in over a five-year period of time. Iredale County and City of Statesville has already agreed earlier in 2016 to provide an 80% incentive for five years for the company. According to Project Sparrow, an additional incentive is needed to cover unforeseen infrastructure expenses, and the need is somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million to make these additional improvements. The company has asked both the City of Statesville and Iredale County to, if they could provide an additional two years on the incentives to help defray the cost of this expansion. This more than qualifies for the incentive based on the policy for year six, which as you know, is a $30 million benchmark of investment. However, in core, in cover the costs of both the infrastructure needs they have, we're requesting a year six and seven be added to that agreement. The funds derived from those additional years will be driven towards offsetting the infrastructure cost anticipated. We'll go after additional funds, both CDBG as well as from our utility partners to offset th- these costs, but tonight, I do ask for you to consider and approve a seven-year, total seven-year incentive agreement for Project Sparrow based on the investment and, and additional jobs over the county average wage.
Thank you, Mr. Rogerson. Any questions for Mr. Rogerson?
Keep up the hard work.
Thank you.
Hearing none. I will open the public hearing as it relates to the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Sparrow. Is, I don't have anyone that has signed up to be heard on this matter. I'll inquire as to everyone that is in attendance, if they missed the sign up, if they would like to be heard. Seeing none, close the public meeting. And at this time, any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive not to exceed 1.7 million over a seven-year period based on the company's investment of 66 million and the creation of 27 new jobs paying an average wage of $37,519 in contingent upon, excuse me, contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogerson, for your ongoing efforts in terms of economic development and business recruitment. I think that you're doing the county and both Mooresville and Troutman and Statesville in harmony, a great service.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Senator.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Smith, if you'll please summarize the administrative matters that were discussed as being appropriate for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, under Administrative Matters, was a request from Solid Waste for approval of municipal engineering as the designer for Phase Six of the landfill, and part of this was to include the gas line portion of this, this project and to basically research a new methodology that they are looking at in Solid Waste for life cycle, or for a life cycle option for our future phases. Item two is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a sole source award to purchase one ECD 800 landfill cover deployer from Environmental Systems, Inc. Item three, a request from ECOM for approval of an interlocal agreement with Mooresville Police Department to be a secondary public safety answering point. Item four, a request from the Register of Deeds for approval of Budget Amendment Number 29 in the amount of $130,345 to appropriate technology and preservation funds. Request, or item five is a request from Animal Services to apply for the Petco Innovation Grant to fund a satellite location in Mooresville. Item six, a request from Administration to approve the renewal contract for the Assistant District Attorney, which expires on June 30th, 2017, and this is part of our inmate reduction efforts. Item seven, a request from Tax Administration for approval of the March 2017 refunds and releases. And eight, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on April 4th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any comments concerning any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Does Chairman make a motion?
Motion by Commissioner Norman to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements or appointments to boards or commissions this evening. There's no specific unfinished business. Item 12, a public comment period, as is customary, on the second meeting of the month. Any citizen can come and share with us concerns or insights onto any subjects, and so this evening, Mr. John Allen has indicated a desire to speak, so, Mr. Allen? Good to see you, and if you could, if you would state your name and your address just for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is John Allen, and my address is 103 Windrow Lane, Statesville, 28625. I come before you tonight to discuss a problem in agriculture, in horticulture specifically, that seems to have landed in our lap here in Iredale. We're now on the front lines of a new insect invasion that's got the potential to cost homeowners and commercial nurseries millions of dollars for loss of trees and income. Agriculture in North Carolina has 84 billion economic impact, and horticulture is about 9 billion. This new bug was accidentally brought from China, and it came into Texas about eight to 10 years ago. It was just discovered first in North Carolina, in Mooresville, this past fall. We have a chance to potentially stop the spread before it destroys a significant crop in North Carolina and the beautiful flowers that folks enjoy on our city streets and our backyards. We've contacted the North Carolina Department of Ag, the City of Statesville, the City of Mooresville, the Iredale County staff, and the North Carolina State Extension Service, and many folks seem on board with an idea to come up with a plan to try to stop this pest before it spreads, but we're seeing it all along Highway 150 in Mooresville at many of the businesses. We've also seen it in some residential areas where it's starting to spread, but it's a very slow-moving insect, and so we have the potential, if we come up with a plan to stop it, that we could maybe keep it from spreading because it's so slow-moving, so. I would just like to use this time to educate the, the committee, the commission, and would request that, you know, potentially, the Department of Agriculture does, does not have jurisdiction over individuals' backyards or some of these commercial properties. They have jurisdiction over nurseries, but we have a, a, a similar insect that we have a problem with in Iredale. When all the construction was going on in the last 20 years, the imported fire ant was brought into Iredale, and South Iredale is now quarantined up to, you know, Interstate 40. So, once the fire ant comes into North Iredale and, and it becomes quarantined as well, we'll have to treat with a very heavy-duty chemical every tree that leaves our nursery to go to a non-quarantined area further north. So, our hope is, is if we can catch this very slow-moving insect, we won't wind up with that same problem with something else. So, if, potentially, we could come up with an ordinance that would stop people from butchering the crepe myrtles off, that would then take those branches and move them to another location where they're dumped and spreading the insect unnecessarily. And potentially, if we were to request that the trees be cut off at the ground and the trees themselves destroyed, and the ground around that area treated with a chemical, the great thing about crepe myrtles is they grow back, and it may not actually cost the homeowner the tree in the long run, and, and, and there wouldn't be a significant cost of replacing the trees. We would just be able to potentially get rid of the tree and the insect on the old branches and then let the new branches grow back unaffected, so. If, if we could, you know, come back with more information later, I would ask to maybe speak to this topic again in more detail.
Mr. Allen, what is, what is the insect and what is, what are the kinds of trees and drugs and all that it seems to be?
This particular insect is called crepe myrtle scale, and it's a very small, tiny insect that attaches itself to the trunk of the trees and it sucks the juice out. And one of the characteristics is, is when it excretes its processed food, there's a fungus that begins to grow on that excess honeydew that's left over, so the trunks of the trees turn black. So, it's very easy to see the infected trees from a distance after they've been infected, but the bug is so tiny, it's just like little white dots and little black dots all over the trunk. So, the average homeowner, the average person, wouldn't know their tree's infected. They, they just wouldn't pay it attention until it's too late. So, eventually, the insect would, would possibly kill the tree because it sucked all the energy out of the tree, and crepe myrtles, we've had scale insect before, but we've never had one that affected crepe myrtles. The other problem is because it's so new, we don't know what other trees it might infect also as a secondary host. So, it's not just on crepe myrtles, potentially, it could be other things as well.
You mentioned that in the Mooresville area, is it also in any of our surrounding counties?
The only county they've found it so far since then is Wake County. So, it's somehow parachuting in on materials brought in from businesses, potentially, that's, that's the best guess, is maybe infected nursery stock that's brought into big-box stores from states that already have the infection.
So, how do you deal with that at, at, well, if that seems to be a, you know, if that's a common source, how are those stores able to?
They're supposed to be regulated by their State Department of Agriculture. They're supposed to be inspected yearly, and if there's a, an outbreak in their area of a bug, they're supposed to be inspected with their shipments before they're shipped. So, again, the insect is so small, you could start out with one or two bugs on a plant, and then after it's been in the landscape for 10 or 12 years, each female can make 200 offspring that hatch right now. They hatch from mid-April to mid-May, and then they spread and reattach and begin to suck again and start over.
How do they spread? It's just on the, on the limbs itself, or they don't fly, they don't?
This particular one does have the ability because when they hatch, they're so small, they can blow in the air, so potentially, they could spread through the air to close parking lots or neighborhoods nearby.
Any questions for Mr. Allen?
What, what do you need from us to, to help address or make people, whereas the state addressing this through the Ag departments, or?
They're, they're educating, but when I ask them, well, what are we going to do to stop this from spreading because they spend millions of dollars on other insects? They said, so far, it doesn't fall in certain categories that have funding, so they haven't looked to stop it, and they claim they don't have jurisdiction over the homeowner's properties or those commercial properties anyway. So, the state ultimately has the authority through the legislature. Each city requests the authority to have jurisdiction over their tree ordinances, so potentially, if Statesville and Mooresville and the county itself were to be on the same page with a similar ordinance that says, for example, the City of Statesville already has made it illegal to do what's called crepe murder, where they come in and cut the tops of the crepe myrtles at commercial sites, but they still do it. There's a fine attached, but again, I've always been one that said, if it's your property, you can do what you want to with it, but, you know, it's stupid to do it, but you can do it, but now it's going to cause that insect to spread, and that's going to be a problem.
Once the, was it, once the trees cut, what's, burn, what's the remedy?
Burn would be the best remedy, yes. At, at least heat treat for a period of time until the insects are dead.
There's a jurisdictional question here.
Yes.
And then there's, you know, a strategy or an enforcement of that strategy. Mostly, it's an education piece because we don't have, as many crepe myrtles as there are around here, you really have to leave it to people to sort of police their own property to be aware.
And that's what's going to happen is, is if we don't catch it now while it's in isolated pockets, it's eventually going to be to the point where you can't stop it. So, that's what my request is, is that we try to get on top of it before it does move.
Have you, here before the Mooresville Town Board?
I have requested that, and it, it's in the process, yes.
Well, I think that we would, you know, certainly be interested in, in trying to address this in, in whatever way legally and effectively we can. I think, who's going to be the best stamp, point of contact?
We've actually talked to Mr. Allen just a bit. Ben was doing some research on this, and I think talking to Nancy Keith over at Cooperative Extension, and, and maybe more than that. We haven't talked about it in about several days, so we can pick it up and work with Mr. Allen and continue to do so.
Well, I think the Agricultural Extension Service is probably best positioned in terms of using their education capabilities and their interaction with both farms and, you know, the public, the general public in terms of educating about farming, and we'll just have to come up with a, a way to use a bully pulpit along with just getting information out there and then, and, and probably, the towns are probably more capable of interacting relative to business regulation and, and the places that are selling crepe myrtles that come from outside and don't know their source, so.
But the, again, the main issue with this particular insect is, is some insects you can spray and you can treat in that specific timeframe, and you can kill them, but this one, there's so many thousands of them that can be on one plant. The research has shown that it doesn't seem to be able to be eliminated. You can, you can reduce the population, but you can't completely eliminate it because they have that protective scale, which is where they get their name from, that's a shell that, once they move in that crawler stage for this two-to-three-to-four week period of time and lock down, most of the newer chemicals that are safer in the environment don't penetrate that shell. So, the, some of the old-school, more hardcore chemicals work really well, but they're not licensed to be used in residential areas, so.
Well, probably getting this information out to the homeowners associations, the home builders association, anybody that's, you know, working with?
The media.
And I understand there's another insect threatening, our ash trees.
It, it did come into Iredale County about a year ago, and, and again, this goes back to, there's so many of these things that can move so fast, like the emerald ash borer is wiping out the ash trees from the Midwest. It came in on Chinese pallet wood, maybe 15 years ago, and hop, skip, jump to Baltimore, to New York City, and so, you know, we've lost the chestnuts, and now the ash, and the American elms, they're making a comeback with some new resistant varieties, but, you know, before long, we're going to have a lot of different plants we can't plant in the landscape anymore, so. I, I just think that this is an exception to most of the rules with the other insects because it's not technically a flying insect, it could be stopped really quick.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Mr. Allen, we appreciate the heads up. So, that close, I'll close our public comment period then. And I would like to, to point out that on the consent agenda, there was a request for the Register of Deeds in terms of appropriating funds for, out of their technology and preservation funds, and Mr. Ron Wyatt, the Register of Deeds, is here this evening. His presentation was so well-crafted and compelling that his presence was not even required to obtain approval on the consent agenda, so thank you, Mr. So thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for attending this evening.
Thank you, Rob.
And I do want to say hello to, uh, Major Carver. And, uh, okay, um, moving on to new business, Mr. Howe.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we as a board try to recognize our department heads throughout the county when they come up with innovative and efficient uses of resources and ways to serve our citizens. So tonight I had a couple to call out. The Register of Deeds is here for his, the feedback we've gotten since he's been in office is preserving his documents and working with staff and the public and especially attorneys, the end users for his department, has been phenomenal, and we just wanted to give a shout out publicly that, uh, the people do appreciate his staff's efforts and his efforts on serving them. Our second shout-out would be Todd Carver's here on behalf of the sheriff. He apologizes that he had another engagement tonight, but he provided all of us with his annual end-of-year, uh, report, and we just wanted to thank him publicly for the innovative and efficient uses he is trying to constantly, along with staff, come up with ways to serve our citizens, to make our community safer, um, to make the department run more efficiently with the revenues and resources that we provide him. And, uh, there was a good article in the paper about that. And so we do try to recognize all of our department heads and especially the ones that are elected. The public, a lot of times, don't know what they are doing to spend their resources wisely. And both of those gentlemen have worked well with our staff, the county manager, on innovative ways to better serve the citizens. So as a board, on our behalf, I just wanted to give a shout-out that they're doing a good job for the citizens of Iredle County.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. And, uh, Commissioner McNeely?
Um, I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman, tell the board, uh, went, uh, last week to the, uh, North Carolina Workforce Development, uh, Committee that met down in Kannapolis. And we are now a member of that. We haven't been, but we are now. Uh, it's a seven-county, maybe eight, excuse me, eight-county, uh, consortium, uh, that meets, uh, quarterly. And the purpose of it is to make North Carolina workforce ready, just as it says. So when you go out and attract new industry and, you know, uh, I've been on a lot of the different economic development things since I've come on the board in a short time, so this plays right into that. And, uh, it was, it was very interesting. I will tell you this much, uh, I sometimes think that we struggle here in Iredle, but, uh, about all the different counties, it was kind of sad to a point, listening to them talk. They talked about they were losing this and losing that and how things were in their county, and it wasn't good, and it wasn't. And they come to me, and I said, well, I'm not trying to brag, but I said, we're busy. We've got a lot of projects that are out there. I said, I'd say we got probably close to a dozen right now that are looking at us in some form or fashion, and I think we're going to get probably half of them, if not more. Uh, a couple of the things that I did bring up, uh, because we all talked about different ways of trying to make the workforce find the jobs that are out there. There's a demand. We're, we're almost to a point, I know nobody will believe this, where even though it says it's below 5%, it may be closer to zero of actually people that can be employed or will be employed. So many are still looking for that certain job and not taking any other kind of job. But the truth be known, the workforce is really tight right now, and there's a lot of people looking for people to work, and they can't find trained, suited employees. And so, you know, I, I, we talked about how now, right now, we're, you know, North Carolina work-ready accredited. We just got that in the county a couple of months ago, which is a big plus for us. They gave a little talk on that presentation. Also, I talked a little bit about the ag early college that we're getting ready to have this coming year up at North Iredle. Uh, and so I think that'll be a big plus for us too, because we're a very ag-related county, very ag-dependent. And then talked a little bit about CCL, which is our, um, basically our training, uh, that we have for all the different, oh, gosh, I don't know how many different curriculums they have of different jobs down there at the Troutman location that Larry Rogers is over. Uh, everything from cooking to cosmetology to, I don't know, automotive, it just goes on and on, brick ma- brick mason to, you name it. You name it, welding, anything. Fire, I think firefighting, I think they're doing that. I mean, they got, they got it all. Uh, so, uh, so we, we're, we're, I think, uh, Iredle Stational Schools, uh, Mooresville, uh, I think, uh, Grady School, I think all of them are realizing that not every child's going to go to a four-year college and go get a three-year degree after that and become a doctor, lawyer, or whatever, that some are just going to go into the workforce, but they need to be trained. They can't just show up with a high school diploma saying, I sure could use a job. People are, they're not looking for that. They're looking for the, the young person, man or, or woman that are, has some abilities already before they ever walk on to it. And also talked about a lot of different, uh, uh, you might want to call it tutorial or, or almost, uh, I don't want, I can't think of the word I want to use, but, uh, they use it a lot in medieval times, I guess, or whatever, where you went and worked for so long. I can't think of my word I want to use, but, yeah. Apprenticeship. They talked a lot about that. Thank y'all. It'd come to me eventually, maybe. Anyway, uh, talked about apprenticeship programs, and I think that's probably a good step, too. So, uh, it was interesting. Uh, a lot of different agencies were involved in this. I was kind of disappointed that there weren't some other fellow elected officials. I was the only elected official at it. Everybody else was kind of a head or director of some different agency. So, uh, I hope maybe, uh, uh, maybe through Ms. Retha, I could contact some of the other counties involved and see if some of their, their leadership does know to show up too, because it's critical. It's very critical. But it was a good meeting. It was a good meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner McNeely. Uh, that, that really strikes at the heart of, of the challenge that we have as a, as a, as a county, is to have the kind of workforce that, uh, employers that are looking for places to, uh, move to or expand in, that we have the right skill sets and the soft skills, you know, the, the ability to understand, to show up to work on time and the right attire and, uh, be able to pass a drug test and, uh, be able to interact with other employees and work as a member of a team. And really have to have a, a lifelong learning perspective that, you know, the economy and the market changes so quickly today that you just cannot, uh, sit back on whatever you've been trained to do and five to 10 years later expect to be doing the same thing or ha- keeping a job that may have changed dramatically. So, uh, it's a challenge for a new generation, and I think our schools, I know our education task force has been working closely with, uh, Iredle Stational Schools and Mooresville Grady Schools in terms of lashing up that connectivity between our high school population and the jobs of the future. And exactly what you're talking about, you know, if, if we're at full employment at four and a half percent, then that just means that the, the skill sets that those new employers are looking for, that are going to provide the jobs with the disposable income to support retail establishments, that they're running out of those. So we've got to grow our own, and we have to reach further back into our, uh, school system, back into the, to the, uh, as early as middle school in terms of showing kids, hey, here are the opportunities out here, here's why you're in school, and here's, uh, the different kinds of, uh, uh, jobs that you can have that are going to pay well. And our school systems are not set up to really have a lot of crossover between our community colleges, which is very much focused on workforce development and vocational education and, and very, uh, responsive to employers to be able to, uh, teach courses that meet specific needs. Uh, well, you can't take a teacher of welding, you know, somebody knows everything about welding, and necessarily teach in the school system K through 12 because they don't have a teacher certificate. Or you can't pay them out of money that the community college gets to hire them to do additional work because it's the wrong color money as far as, uh, the appropriations at the state level. So we've got to work, I think, uh, this is a good example of how economic development and education are both joined at the hip to produce the desired effect, and we have to work with our state-level, uh, educators to try to break down these unnecessary barriers that are not appropriate anymore, uh, between, uh, K through 12 and community colleges. And have to look at a K through 14 model. So, uh, the great thing is, I think, Iredle County, that we are positioned ourselves and continue to position ourselves with very proactive organizations and people. But it would sure be helpful if some of the systems and policies and procedures that exist, uh, that have been designed for a different economic age could be updated, but that's above, that's above our pay grade. So, uh, we have to push and prod and try to get the system to respond, but, uh, at the, at this time, we can just try to make the best we can locally. And so thank you for, uh, attending on behalf of Iredle County and, uh...
And they did do some flexibility as far as the school scheduling. They did pass that. Unfortunately, it's 20 counties in a pilot program, and I don't think we're in the pilot. But that's a start. That's a start. So things are happening in legislature that they're listening to us as far as these kids that are doing the early college.
Uh, one thing I'd pass, oh, you just have something?
I just, I just also, since it was on the consent agenda, I had, uh, overlooked it. I wanted to give a shout-out to also David Lambert and his staff at the landfill. They do a great job on behalf of our citizens, and they're coming up with innovative ways to treat the landfill and deal with odors and things for the community. Uh, sometimes we overlook people, but that is one major department that we have that does a great job and, and don't, and they do not get the credit they deserve because they're always dealing with, uh, trash, should I say, and odors. So, but they're doing a good job on behalf also, uh, as one of our departments that are always looking to be innovative and leaders in the state and the, and the national level.
Thank you. And I would pass on as an update for the board and the community, uh, at the last Lake Norman Regional Transportation Commission meeting, we had a presentation, uh, among others, by, uh, Mr. Jim Dunlap from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, specifically on, uh, the proposed, uh, super street concept and expansion on Highway 150, uh, from the county line, uh, into, uh, you know, uh, beyond Highway 21. And, uh, they have taken into account a number of the comments that we provided and that the Town of Mooresville provided relative to, uh, uh, some greater points of access. Uh, but the point of the, of the whole design is to, uh, eliminate time spent at stoplights. And that's where most of your, your time is spent waiting for a signal to turn, so eliminating as many signals as possible is, is the whole, uh, concept here. And, uh, it will bring some traffic, you know, eliminate some ability to get where you want to go the shortest distance by turning at a stoplight, by requiring you to go further down the road and then doing a U-turn and coming back. But they can demonstrate through the studies and the actual, uh, experiences in other states where this has been adopted, uh, that, uh, time, you know, distance does not compute into time. That if you're actually moving and you can, you can get to that location that you want to go to faster using this concept than waiting at a signal. And it also eliminates this accordion effect that you have in heavy traffic where you're starting and stopping. As an old drill sergeant, uh, Commissioner Norman knows about the accordion, accordion effect in terms of marching, applies to vehicles as well. At any rate, um, I would encourage people, if they really want to see, uh, get more details, to go onto the North Carolina Department of Transportation website and look under the, uh, 150 project information. They have a wealth of information there. Uh, also includes information on the, you know, the, uh, 77, uh, express lanes and what, what's going on there. So, uh, that's all I had to pass on. Any other, uh, comments for the good of the order? Okay. Uh, county manager's report, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, real quickly, want to give two recognitions to, uh, two of, uh, our Iredle County employees. Got a letter from the, uh, UNC School of Government last week. Uh, this has to do with Dean Lael, um, who you all deal with probably every two weeks. Um, Dean has achieved a lifetime status, lifetime status as a certified local government purchasing officer. Um, he was recognized at, at, at the Carolinas Association of governmental purchasing at their annual conference last month. And in their words, um, lifetime status is earned by a select few purchasing officers whose careers exemplify the highest level of professional achievement. So that, that's, this really good, uh, good work for Dean, um, especially coming from UNC School of Government. Sorry, Jeff. Um, but, uh, but I wanted to recognize Dean because, uh, he puts his heart and soul into his job. Uh, second person, Bill Jeter, was recognized as the Iredle County Emergency Communications Telecommunicator of the Year, uh, last week by a group of his peers. Uh, Bill is, uh, he's been with us since 2011. Recently was promoted to a supervisor back in February. Uh, he's also a member at Lake Norman Fire Department, uh, genuinely good guy and, uh, always, uh, tries to be a good example in ECOM. And finally, had something Jeff was talking about jogged my memory. Uh, the early college gold, uh, at North Iredle, uh, the Golden Leaf request, they did receive their, uh, visit from Golden Leaf. Uh, and as of last week, Russ had not received one for the road extension at Mooresville Business Parks, uh, East. Uh, however, he let me know, I think it was late last week or early this week, uh, saying that they have scheduled it. Yeah, it was yesterday. He, he let me know that they have scheduled that for, I believe, May 3rd. Uh, so those, both of those are good signs. We're still in the run, running for both of those. The North Iredle project, I believe, was 450, 400, 450.
Yeah.
And the business park was around 600,000, and these are grant funds with no, um, you know, no county money that's going toward it and, uh, valid, uh, good projects that they'd be going to.
Could you share with the public what the, uh, Golden Leaf fund is?
Well, and I may have to call on Ben to help me out with this one, but Golden Leaf is basically, um, money that has been accumulated for the displacement of tobacco, uh, over, over the years, and it goes to, um, counties that have been impacted by that. So they dedicate, and in our case, I believe it was 1.8 million, uh, in our region, no, for our, uh, to that, for our county, more so in the region, I believe, um, of that funding, uh, that goes back into, generally speaking, economic development projects for those qualifying counties. Very seldom that we, that our region has, um, been able to access this money, though. Usually goes to, uh, a little more depressed areas.
We have some quality projects. Thank you. All right, uh, we've already conducted a closed session pursuant to, uh, attorney-client, uh, issues pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318.11 subsection A3, and, uh, no specific action is, needs to be reported on that. Um, is there any further business to come before the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All close, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.